At seven o'clock, April 12, 2022, Town Council meeting. Everyone, please rise with a pledge of allegiance, followed by a number of silence.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under universal liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Excited. Proclamation, some presentations we have at this time. Move the public conditions, communications, and public station on any subject of jurisdiction of the town council with a two-minute limit. If you are on the line, you can hit the raise hand function or start on your mobile device. Going once, going twice. All right, move to seven A. Reports of boards and committees responsible to the council. Any updates for church group?
We, we bet beginning of the month, there's going to be no more change orders. The last ones we approved are going to be completed this next week while kids are on school breaks. So the building doesn't have children in it and you're moving forward. We're waiting for a few more things to be delivered because of delays. We're moving forward to close out.
There's no other reports. So move on to reports of town council leaders. I'll actually start on the other end with Colleen. You're good to go first.
Sure. Hi, everyone. So Mental Health Task Force met last Monday, April 4. Maureen had requested the village to come out. They're organization that also offers mental health services. So the task force got to meet them and they discussed what they do. And with the village, they do require a two-year contract for providing services. And at this time, the task force thought it'd be best to work on maybe a survey of what the needs are of the town. And then move forward with that. I'm not sure Maureen will still work on what those costs might be and send it off to us on the committee still. Let's see. And they also did discuss again that maybe becoming a commission or committee instead of the task force eventually, just because they feel like their role will never really end because it's always evolving into different things with mental health. There's a special commission on people with disabilities meeting tomorrow to discuss the engineering, engineering study, get feedback. And I think that's all.
Thank you, Ms. Chair. That PZC met last night. That it was a very interesting discussion that they had regarding the various issues regarding the drive-throughs. And there's the noise, noise abatement issues and things like that. So a lot of things that were discussed, I mean, it looks positive going forward that they're, they're looking to expand the abilities for drive-throughs, but also be cognizant of the issues regarding the residents in the area. Although the comment was aptly made that, well, I don't think anyone's going to drop a drive-through on Capitol Road or anything like that. But so they're, they're, they're moving forward with that. The big issue is as far as for the town council side is that they did discuss the, the issues regarding the Affordable Housing Fund that the, that they are actually putting up board for a, for a public hearing on moving or delaying the, the implementation of the housing regulation that we, we had discussed regarding the affordable housing for another six months so that it would, that the moratorium would be set for January 1st, 2023, as opposed to July 1st, 2023, or 2022. Will allow us to the town council to sort of discuss the issues as far as everything that was discussed during the joint meeting. That they also did give a, a commitment that they will look at the issue regarding the 20, the, the $25,000, $50,000 that, that will be assessed if you fail to meet per unit. And that they are going to look at that and to make it more of a sliding scale so that we're encouraging people to come here, but also encouraging for them to provide affordable housing, which was mainly directed towards the smaller developers that were the five to six, five to 10 unit housing units that they were looking at. The one thing that they were, that they did ask us to examine and to sort of consider is if we are going to go in conjunction with discussing the Affordable Housing Fund, which they are hoping that we will, we agree, will agree to at one of our future meetings, but also to address the issue of the abatement, since that was something that was brought up and to have sort of a joint, a two-pronged attack on it where this is, we're encouraging you to, to, to go over what we're looking for with this abatement, but we're also, if you fail to meet the requirements, and this is also the possible, possible fees that you'll have to pay. I think it was a, you know, it was a very good discussion that they were very open that they did keep to what we discussed during that joint meeting. So that's for PZC. As far as for the Veterans Recognition Commission that, or committee that they, that I missed the last full meeting because it was, it was back in, right before St. Patrick's Day. But that I did meet with Per and Maynard that we did have a table set up over at the Lions Club run this past weekend to hand out information and to at least make our presence known that we did obtain some donations or some discount items from the Lions Club. So we have chairs now. We have a the tent that we could set up for different events. We have a table so that we're actually being able to like set up and be present during some of the town functions. One thing that, that was requested that, that addressed to you Lisa is down the road, or if available, that there is a spot that, that is available at the the county jail, like the town historical building and jail where there's a room off the backside where like a closet that's on the outside where if we could talk to, talk to the Historical Society to see if we would be able to use that for storage. Right? Oh, that Per addressed it with, I believe it was, I mean, not Lisa, but with.
Kathy.
Kathy. Thank you. Long day. And he addressed with Kathy, but that it was something that I said I'd bring up to before, before you to sort of discuss with Kathy as well. Well, just that small thing to put the chairs, the tent in and other things that we, like other familiar that we'll be getting soon. So, um, other than that, that's all I have, Ms. Chair.
Thank you. Got to move a couple of new chair.
Just checking out my calendars to make sure I didn't miss anything because I feel like I'm missing things these days. We had a meeting for PCC, Permanent Celebration Committee. The Memorial Day task list was reviewed. Everybody was assigned their tasks. They're looking at the possibility of doing a Gold Star Mom project this year and a Blue Star Mom, which I never heard of Blue Star. So that's new. And then also looking at, in conjunction with the parade, doing a Memorial Day home decoration thing, like a contest. They moved the parade before. I think they're looking at kind of keeping. That's all I got for now.
Thank you. We don't have anything to report. Conservation canceled their meeting until the 14th. I think the Water Commission maybe had met for a special meeting prior to our last meeting. There is nothing really to report through moving forward with the application. A lot of, I think, the revenues and other financial concerns were down, but they're only down because COVID has eased up a little bit in some ways. So there's less home, give a home, but.
And they talked about the joint meeting with council that about the affordable housing. And basically that's what they discussed and.
Thank you. That's memory.
The Ag Commission met on the 4th. They're starting to plan the next Farm-to-Table Dinner, which sounds like works out is going to be in person. The tentative date for that, September 15th at the lodge. Yeah, that's the date they're talking about. I think it's a Thursday in September. There was a lot of discussion about how to use the proceeds from, from that dinner and also tracking down proceeds from their last dinner, which I think David was able to find for them. So they're talking about maybe a scholarship and some of the money going to the food bank as well. They also were talking about Restaurant Week, which might be the week before the Farm-to-Table Dinner. And it would involve town restaurants featuring local produce. This wouldn't be like a discount restaurant week. It would just be that the various restaurants in town would really just feature local produce and things. And they are looking for an update on when the council will consider the town green use policy. So the farmers market could consider moving back to the green. I know that's on our list. I just don't know if we have a date for when we're looking at that yet.
Thank you. Also, Maria, I think we might be looking at it some way. Can I talk about maybe for the managers' report or at the additions from council members?
Yeah, I just had, can I ask you a quick question?
Sure.
We were advised that they wanted to stay at the Country Butcher. Did they change their mind?
There was a lot of discussion about the the market, Market Master. Maybe that was the term they were using.
The Market Master.
Market Master. So there might be some disagreement between the Ag Commission and the Market Master. They, they were, they didn't say they wanted to move back to the green. They said, are you guys going to be reviewing that policy? So if we did want to move back to the green, we could.
So I can address that during the manager's report.
Next, that's a question.
Sure.
Sorry. She's a love playing. Do you know the difference between a Blue Star and?
Case of Blue Star is they're deployed, right? Your, your family member who passed.
Yeah, exactly.
Star Mom is, a Gold Star Mom is a mom whose child died. A Blue Star Mom, I believe, is deployed. Is somebody.
Thank you.
Good enough verification. Go on to item eight, eight point one, consideration of a resolution approving the fine for the library. And we have with us tonight Barbara, any John, the library director. Otherwise, Lisa, if you want to give the summary.
I'll start it out and then if there's any questions, Barbara can certainly add in or pick up Riley Block. Back in 2008, the town council set a fine and fee schedule for the library for overdue library items. Over the years, the fines and fees are starting to dwindle. Next year, we estimated them to be between three and 4,000 if, if we were going to collect fees for next year. So what happens with that is sometimes it deters patrons to come back because they feel embarrassed or you know, don't want to, fees just accumulate over time and, and so they tend not to want to come back to the library. And what many libraries across the county are doing is doing the library fine fee, free fine libraries. And that's not, certainly not the big things such as the hotspots or tablets or Kindles, things like that. It's not things like that, but it's those things we still collect and have them replaced and so forth. And also what we're proposing here is to do the, to eliminate the past due fees, but not to say that they're not responsible to replace the item. So in February of '22, some of the information that we got, some of the Connecticut libraries, there was 94 of them in, in the state of Connecticut that are actually doing this. So what we'd like to propose is to go ahead and eliminate the overdue fees for the library collections as part of that whole policy and implement that policy. And if you'd like, I can let Barbara speak to it more.
Yeah, Barbara, if you want to add any additional information.
You got to unmute Barbara.
You're still muted.
There is no evidence that collecting fines brings materials back any more quickly. And actually, libraries that have gone fine-free have found that materials do come back more quickly because there is a shame, particularly with lower income patrons to, to have those fines. They don't want to come back. They don't want to engage staff in that conversation. Staff does not want to engage patrons with that conversation. So that's, that's one thing. It doesn't help. It doesn't help. And sometimes people will say, well, collecting fines helps to, helps people to be responsible. And that really hasn't found, it hasn't been the case. People are ashamed. They, they don't want to come back. We will still hold them responsible for returning items. When things are so overdue that they're, they are in a lost category, then we do, we want those items back. And if the patron has lost those items, then they will be charged that, that, those fees. And fines, fines are dropping. For one thing, we are purchasing more digital materials. There are no fines on digital materials. When your time is up, it's gone. We have a very effective system of reminding patrons when things are due, when things are overdue. And we also have a very effective system for renewing things. Right now, we have automatic renewal. So when something is almost due, the library, if no one else wants it, will renew it for them. And that, that has been helpful. Patrons are happy about that. So fines don't really work and it creates situations that are not helpful, not helpful for the library, the patron, bringing patrons back. I would be interested in answering any questions you might have.
Thank you, Barbara. We're all set. Your presentation.
Yes, if, you know, I have some information. I know you had some questions ahead of time. I don't know if you're all set with those, but we're ready to respond if you need anything else.
All right. I guess open the floor to discussion. If there's any questions, council new chair.
So thank you for that, Barb. While we said that doesn't mean responsibility free, how does this work then? If somebody keeps something out, if it's late, are you guys going to call them? Or is it, you know, after a certain amount of time, like how's it going to work if there's without the?
Well, we have different loan periods for different items. Once, once something has gone into what we call the lost status, then we will, yes, we typically don't call patrons. Almost everybody has email. If a patron doesn't have email, then we will call. There are very few people that don't have email. And they receive notices, you know, such and such an item is considered to be lost. Please bring it back or bring in whatever the amount is of the item.
Okay. So if, are you going to do that when somebody is late? I guess that's where I'm, is it just?
Late, fines are for late. We, we would rather not do that for most materials. Again, as, as Lisa had mentioned, for hotspots, for museum passes, for nooks, for Kindles, games, we're still going to, we would still like to charge people because those items are in demand, in, you know, great demand. And we want those items back ASAP. But if it's a book and it's been out, they've renewed it. Once it's been renewed, twice, then it's going to go into a lost status and they will get a bill.
So the renew is automatic or do they have to come in?
No, it's automatic.
Okay. And then after that second time, if, if it doesn't come back, then it goes into a lost status and you would email them and say, hey, we don't have this. It's $19.99 for the.
Correct.
I think that makes sense. Thank you.
You're welcome.
New chair, are there any other questions from council members? I was going to ask Barbara, what, what percentage of materials, you're talking about spots and other things, what percentage would be not a part of the fine-free policy? My new amount would be like 1%.
You know, I, we have two hotspots. We have six nooks. We're bringing on, I think, three or four Kindles. We have many games, maybe close to 100 games. Those are, those are the big ticket items. And we have cake pans too. I don't think we're going to put cake pans in that, that category. Puzzles are free. So not, not a lot, not a lot of items.
Any other questions? See, not any.
Lisa, I thought I read it. I just want to be sure. You already took this out of the budget, out of your.
Yes, yeah, I thought of the financial summary on the cover sheet. Yeah. It was so minimal that I felt comfortable, especially with the other revenues I was putting in, that I didn't, I didn't budget for it. So if you decide not to pass this this evening, we'll just have whatever extra funds are collected deposited next year.
Right. So the middle discussion, I entertain a motion to approve the resolutions, eight point one.
I would make the motion.
Motion made by Councilor Luba. Is there a second?
A second.
Second by Councilor Murray. And another discussion, always in favor, say goodbye by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed extensions? All right, so it's unanimous. Eight point two is a consideration of a resolution approving a transfer of $398,155 from the Buicks. Audited unexpended balance as of June 30, 2021 to the Education Reserve Fund.
Okay, this is our annual request that's brought forward from the Board of Education. It's part of ordinance number 86 that was passed several years ago. And it's for the Education Reserve Fund. What that fund ordinance requires is that if the Board of Education votes to request any remaining funds up to 1% of what their budget was, the town council will consider it, but not until after the third quarter of the current fiscal year after the year that was audited. The audit came back fine. It showed over $796,000 was left over at the end of last year. The town council also approved half of that money or ready to go into the COVID Reserve Fund. The other half of it was requested to go into the Education 1% Fund. So that's what we're here tonight to re, the Board of Education has requested to, to move those funds into the Education Reserve or through the town to consider that, the town council. If you do make this transfer, the, the amount that would be in that fund would be around $901,000.
Thank you, Lisa. Are there any questions from councilors?
No, but I could try to answer.
Is part of this money what they're using for the technology for? Next question.
Right. They're using some of these funds. No, that was the COVID reserve for the, that's a school program. I'm sorry. But yes, they, their intention was to use some of these funds for the technology side because that was removed from the capital budget when I was working on the capital plan. And that the fund has that allowance to be able to use for those items.
Thank you. Are there any other questions? I have a motion to approve the resolution as up by eight point two.
I'll make the motion.
Moved by Councilor Luba. Is there a second? Second by Councilor Murray. Always in favor, say goodbye by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Eight point three, consideration of a resolution approving the application of the community project funding grants. I'll just make a quick note that there are two separate resolutions. So it noted in resolution two that I'll be recusing myself in that. I'll be voting on that resolution. And in addition for the discussions, I'm allowed to be seated to discuss the grants or the funding as a whole, but won't be at a discussion directly on really item four of the four items. So any of those questions can go through me to Lisa or turn it to councilor to answer. So that will provide an additional summary in context.
Okay. On March 25th, Congressman Courtney announced an opportunity for the towns to apply for community project funding. This program provides opportunities to secure federal funding for small and often overlooked projects within the second district. The opportunity for funding is made available this year as Congress drafts the fiscal year 23 appropriation bill. What will happen is they'll select projects to submit them to the appropriations committee for their consideration. There are several requirements within the cover sheet. I get into a lot more detail of the requirements, but basically the town is eligible to apply for these. They are one of the eligible entities. They do require robust community support, whether it be your local representatives, your citizens, your town council. There's a, there's a lot of support that's required to go forth with the applications. The projects can only be for a one-year funding and not a multiple-year type funding source or project. We're applying for programs that hopefully will have no matching grant requirements. So we're looking to try to have projects that will move forward where we won't have to pay for anything. And hopefully it'll pay for the entire project. I'm getting to a concern I have in a moment. The applications are due April 15th, Friday at 5:00 PM. Due to the holiday, we close on Thursday at 4:30. We're very, we were given very little time to try to pull this all together. So what, with the short notice, staff worked very quickly to come up with some ideas of what to apply for. I felt it was prudent to begin to prepare the applications so they would be completed in time for possible submission in case they were to be approved this evening. We would have, we would only have one day had we not done anything and just waited till tonight. So we gathered the information and, and tried to put some stuff together. Of course, it's the town council decision as to how you want to wish to move forward with any of these grant requests. If you do not wish to proceed, then, you know, that is certainly within your jurisdiction. And any information that's been prepared will always be useful for the future. If there's any future grants that come along. Consistent with the town council goals that you adopted on December 28th of '21, one, one goal there was to promote sound infrastructure. So I selected some items on that list to try to attempt to work towards achieving some of your goals. Most recently, staff has been meeting with the Historical Society regarding the condition of the old jail. And there are substantial repairs that are required to make that building safe and ADA accessible. Well, that fits one of the things under your goals regarding ADA accessibility as well as infrastructure needs. We're looking to get more detailed costs. We have some preliminary. And I felt that this one could move forward quickly and absolutely something that needs attention. The next one that I've recommended in this process comes from the Capital Improvement Program. And that's for the construction of the updated parks garage that is needed to enhance the safety of staff, areas for breaks and lunch, and, and able to be able to secure and preserve space for our equipment to be kept inside because of weather and things like that and to secure it better. Since this one was approved as part of our CIP and is something that has been pushed off for several years, I thought this would be another good recommendation to bring forward. And again, it's on some of your town council goals. In the effort of trying to secure funding, I did move a bit quickly on some of my recommendations. There, there are two projects that are not ready. There, there are two projects that are not ready to move forward. First, the, the waterline project to the vineyards area would more than likely not comply for the grant. And I, I kind of rushed to throw that one in because I know we've been trying to secure funding wherever we can for, to, for the future. But with, the council hasn't even decided which way to go. I don't think it would qualify because we're looking at close to $15 million for that particular project. It's not considered one of the smaller projects. And I jumped on it and was going to pull it out before the agenda got out. It, it didn't happen in time, so I apologize for that. But my recommendation, it, it just, I just don't feel that this one's ready to go for this particular project. But that's certainly for this request, I don't think it would really qualify, but certainly that's up to all of you to discuss this evening. The, the second one, I'm, I'm a little torn on. It has to do recommendation on the ADA sidewalk track, sidewalk project. The historic sidewalks in the district here in town. Again, this was another one that I thought about, it, trying to achieve your goals. It was a specific one for the sidewalks to be addressed in, in the historic district. So when I was trying to look at ideas of what could I go for, that one would probably be the, you know, half to $2 million. That, that falls within the realm and it's a, it's a non-matching grant. So I put that one forth also because we're hoping to have everything. It's on track for further discussion later in June. We have contracted with the landscape architect. He's meeting with the Commission on People with Disabilities this week. And then next week he will be meeting with the historic district preservation. He's familiar with the preservation of how to preserve the historical values and such, but I don't know what will come out of this analysis until he's completed it. The goal was to bring it to town council in June and have the various stakeholders involved in that meeting. The council and the commissions, that maybe the residents. Just to, to discuss it. So I was thinking, well, that one may or may not be happening quickly. And so I did put that one on, on the list, but I'm, I'm still torn on it. This one is certainly up to the council to determine if you would rather wait. It, it would not be appropriate for me to apply for a grant and get an award and then the council decides we don't want to do it. That wouldn't probably look well with the congressman's office. So, and I know you're not ready to make a decision until you have all the facts and data. So, the, that's the other one that, like I said, I'm kind of torn on what we could do. And if you're uncomfortable with making a decision on that one tonight, you know, you all can decide if, if you'd rather wait. We still have whatever we compiled here. We did get some letters and things like that to support it where we could save it and hopefully other grants will come down. I'm sure there'll be some historic grants at some point. And again, you know, unless you have different feelings on that one, you know, we could try, but the last thing I want to do is get awarded a grant and then tell the congressman, oh, thanks, no thanks. So, you know, I, I'm sorry if I put you in a precarious position with this. Certainly wasn't my intent. It was more to try to address some of the needs that I, I know have been going on. And this one I kind of really thought was starting to move, even though it's not any decisions made on it yet. So that is my overview. And certainly, if you would like to discuss them, Beverly is also here. She has a little bit of information, but I could certainly try to address each one as you'd like.
Welcome to the quarter description, Councilor Luba.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a quick question. Are we limited to just one? I mean, is there, is there like, you know, where, if we say, if we decide that we want to put in several and then, you know, see how things, how things lie. So it's something that realistically, if we wanted to, we could make a request essentially for all four of these and see, see if they get approved.
You can do that.
Okay.
Like I said, the, the water one, I think, is a lot more complicated, but you can. And if they approve it, that's where you've got to feel comfortable if you're going to be ready to move forward with it or or decide how you feel about wanting to term.
And then, second question I have is, I mean, would the Miracle Field be something that could fit in this? I mean, because I, I mean, I know, looking at it, I took a quick look at, at some requirements and it's sort of like there but not, and you know, so what are the thoughts on that?
I, I did consider the Miracle Field. I was thinking of adding that one. And because of where that is right now as well, and, and there's some decisions going on, I, I decided to hold back because there's so many other moving pieces as part of that with the Miracle Field group fundraising and things like that. Beverly, did you have anything also that you want to share about that there?
The turf field, but I wasn't sure what the council's decision was on that. To replace it or?
The, the turf field that the, that the.
At the high school. Yeah, that, that was another one I was going to try to add at the last minute and we were just running out of time. But unfortunately, if this wasn't just, it, he released it on the 25th. I think we got it a little bit later than that. By the time we started trying to look at everything, we were rushing and trying to figure out, well, what could we apply for? If more time, we probably could have applied for a lot more things. But yeah, the, the turf field was one of them. The Miracle Field, I just because of everything involved with it, I wasn't comfortable with sharing everything because we don't have everything done yet for that either.
Sure.
Turf field is not an idea.
Yeah, well, that's, I was gonna say that my suggestion, Mr. Chair, would be that we are considering it is going for, for one and two. I, I still think also to, to, the sidewalk is something that's worthwhile. And then we can put that application since you've already done the work. I would, I would ask that the, the town council consider, consider putting both the turf field as well as the Miracle Field on. And I know that the, I understand, this is your concern regarding the Miracle Field. But I think it's something that we have enough going forward at this point where it's something that we can at least put in a proposal for. And that, you know, that, at least that's my thought on where this is a possibility of funding. This is something that could take care of that and that we all, even though we may not agree specifically on the location, that getting that funding, I mean, if that's something that we get the funding, that makes, makes it much easier to say, you know, that we're going to do it this, at this spot. But, I mean, I would, I would fully support one through three. And then, I mean, number four, I agree with the, with the water mains. We're not there yet. I mean, and that's something that really that knowing how these grants and these funds work, you really need to have a lot of granularity in it. That's why even with the Miracle Field, I think that we're not quite there, that, at the full granularity. But at least it's something that we could put in and if they ask us for more. But, uh, the turf field, I think, is also something that, that we should consider because that's another one where it meets the requirements. Or that was set forth under the, under the grant request. And I think it's something that we should consider. That's my thoughts, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Luba. Good night, Councilor Murray.
Um, I agree with Lou on adding the turf field. I actually, I thought about the Miracle Field when I sent this, but, and the idea, the reason why I kind of thought about it was because even with the fundraising that they're doing, if we were able to get any money for the Miracle Field project, then the money that they have, we can immediately put that into a trust. So then next field is paid for. We don't have to get into the same dilemma that we're in with the turf field. So I think that would be beneficial if it were to be put on there. My LA has been killing me. I'm just gonna kill you with my LA. But, um, the, I'm good with, like, I, I like one for sure with the jail. I like two for the garage. I like three for the accessibility for the sidewalks. Because we've been talking about that for a couple of years now. We finally got people working on it and that something is going to happen with it. It's just a matter of what they come back to us with. So, um, I think that's a good one to put in there. I think the water mains is just too big. It's a small project. It's not gonna, I don't think that one would be considered, especially with all the Joe money that's coming to the state for everything else. So, one through three, I'm good with. And if we can whip up Miracle Field, turf field, we can definitely, we, that's, that one is just it's, there's already a, in place. Like, you know, we could definitely put that one on there.
Yes.
Yeah, of course.
We can certainly try if that's what the, the council wants to bring forward through your resolution process this evening. I can see how quickly we could try to pull it together because we really will only have like one day to, to get everything. So I, I know we do have some stuff. The artificial turf, we do have a preliminary quote and things like that. I'm not sure if that would fun, be funded for a no matching grant. I would have to look in because there's different types of grants under this program. And so that, that was the thing, we were looking for grants that would be a no match 100%. So I'm not sure if that's the case. And if it turns out that those require a matching portion, then we have for the turf field anyway, we have concerns because the project is not officially approved for debt financing until next year. I think we will go through that.
It's in our capital plan though, right? Does that count? That it's, we have planned for it. It's in our capital plan.
Yes, it's in, it's in the capital plan, but it's not appropriated yet. So that.
But none of these are.
Right? No, but if we get 100% funding, it'll be a very quick funding. You know, it's a, it's a resolution for, for you to put in. But if it's one that we have to come up with funds for, then that is a little more involved, especially if it requires a bonding resolution. It could, depending on the time of year and how much non-referendum debt we've issued, it could turn into a referendum type debt. So there's a lot of things that could be involved depending on where this all lands. So we have to be cautious of that as well. But, I mean, I can look into it and see, you know, if, if if the turf field is a non-matching one, maybe we could pull it together quickly. I just gotta see where Leslie's at with everything she's got to do to finish. Once you determine which ones you want to move on, then she's got to finalize all the documents. We, she did prepare most of it. The Miracle Field, again, if you're ready to commit on that, that's the thing. And I'm not sure, you know, you all have to meet on that one. Maybe fifth, I think, we're bringing that one to you when the study will be completed. So that one is moving along and I'm sure, you know, it's a great idea with, they're still fundraising and there's funds that could be deposited into a trust fund set aside for that purpose, that, that would be a very good idea. At least put some security to the project. And I know that is one of your concerns with, with the whole Miracle Field topic. So, you know, I could look at it, I could try. And if I get, if I'm given the authority and it's something that I can move forward with, I will. And if I can't, then I'll just advise you through an email saying this was, I just couldn't do it. But at least I'd have the authority if, if you're all in agreement with it. So if there's some that you're all feeling uncomfortable with or comfort, if you're all comfortable with them, certain ones, we could do like a group resolution of the ones that you maybe all have consensus on. And if there's some that you may not have consensus on, we could break those out and do separate resolutions this evening if you'd like.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Nope.
Councilor Murray, and I think Councilor Mutek got a question.
The in our packet, the background item summary, the first paragraph, it says that Congressman Courtney announced the return of this community project funding. Is this something that's been available to us in the past?
It, were you aware of it? I, I think in past years it was. I'm not sure it's been around.
The year, Marie, so.
Is it what?
The program, like an earmark program. I haven't seen it in a couple of years.
Yeah, it's, it's been going, but he's bringing it forward. Again, trying to.
Okay, so we don't have like a historical, you know, kind of list of projects ready to go.
No, then, no, hadn't, had we been aware of something like this happening every year, this would have been something we could have said, oh, we'll do that. Right now, I, I've got so overwhelmed trying to apply for grants here and there. Now, there, there's only so much they can handle too, because once you get the grants, now you have to manage them all too. So that's, we're, we're dealing with it.
And I know you, you talked to us a little bit about these particular projects, but, you know, some of my colleagues came up with really kind of quickly some other ideas. I mean, I know that there are a number of things that we've heard about that didn't make this list. Things like improvements to the rec center, right? They've been talking about new windows, how that could improve efficiencies there. You know, there's some facade type updates at the rec center. I think there's a bit of a leak at the lodge at Ramble Park. I mean, there, so there's a, a number of different projects. Were all, I mean, like, how, how do you consider which ones to choose?
Yeah, well, basically what I tried to do was I tried to look at what has been kind of moving along. And I, I looked through the capital program just, and I had Leslie look at it with me also to try to see what was something that's already out there, already almost ready to go. And that's where I came up very quickly with the ideas of, you know, where could we get the support for these things quickly? Where could we get the detailed cost information the best we could? Because it requires all types of information. And to try to get like the rec center or the lodge, that's something that's not even in the capital plan right now. And, and we really didn't have anything to go on with anything like that. As much as it's needed, that is something that really needs to either get in the plan or into a maintenance program to make that happen. So, these were some of the things that I just looked at through that. I tried to look at your goals to, to again say, okay, what can I check off of your goal list to achieve some of those as well? So I was trying to to juggle all of that.
Thank you. So the, when, when we're applying for this grant, then the requirements are pretty specific as to what we're asking for and the cost estimates and okay, so in regards to the sidewalks, do we have any of that information?
Yes, we do have some preliminary. We're going to get, well, let me back up. Beverly's looking at me, what are you crazy? We're, we're we did have one, depending on what way it was going to do, we had some preliminary cost estimates for different things. Okay, so we have some of that. We also have an architect that is almost finished with his work, a landscape architect. And coming forward to try to bring that, once he meets with the historic district.
Meeting with the historic district and to start that process.
Right, right. So he's, he's trying to get all that together to come forward. My thoughts were because he's moving along with that, hopefully by the time this gets approved, which you know is not going to happen in the next couple of weeks, it's probably going to take quite a few months to a year maybe for the 23 budget. It's for the 23 appropriations bill. That I thought at that point, that one was kind of moving forward. That's why I said tonight, thinking about it, you know, you all haven't really had the opportunity to look at. Some of you weren't even on the council when the proposed proposals came through. Talking about the different options that were proposed last time we went through a joint meeting. You know, so we did have some cost estimates back then. I threw a number together based on some of that and just took the hopes of that. But again, like I said, that's up to all of you, how you want to go with this.
I, I have some concerns about including the sidewalks in this, in this grant. the sidewalks in this, in this grant. I I was not part of the council the last time this came before the council. However, I understand that there were disagreements about the best way to move forward. And I am concerned about intentionally or unintentionally picking a side. I don't have enough information about how we might move forward. I don't know how the historic district commission feels about it. I don't know how the residents of the green feel about it. I don't know how the disability commission feels about it. I don't know how, you know, numerous community members feel about it. And I'm uncomfortable being asked to approve something with so much unknown in front of us. I think that there could be an expectation that if we apply for this money that we are going to take some sort of an action. And there's been no action requested of us at this point. So it's, it's a little, you know, we're, we're applying for money to do something before we have anything to do. And, and not having the answers to those questions. It, it makes me very uncomfortable. I, I don't want to intentionally or unintentionally pick a side. I don't, I don't have an opinion at this point about how to move forward with that project and, and I think it's it, it makes me feel very uncomfortable about that project. I would like to support the, uh, the people who are requesting more accessibility on the green. That is consistent with our goals. But I also am aware that we have a historic green that is very important to a lot of people in town, and I think any changes to that green, to the green need to be made with a lot of deliberation. And to be done in a way that is respectful of the historic nature of our green. It is, you know, our green was mentioned as one of the things when we were mentioned as one of the top places to live in the country, right? The green was specifically mentioned in that. So I think no one wants to move forward with a project that would not be true to the nature of the green. So I, I'm, I'm really struggling with that. We, we don't know at this point, uh, do we have any input? I mean, I, well, let's, let me, uh, let me rephrase that question. We got an email from you this last week about your outreach to community members for letters of support. So, um, is that email going to be put in the minutes of this? It wasn't included in the packet, but it is part of the grant, right?
It's part of the application.
Application.
Information that we need for the application.
Okay.
So, you know, we have to get things from our state. Congressmen, senators, representatives, our town council, if they're supportive of it. Citizens, it, it all depends on, on which project it is.
Okay.
So I had to get something, not that it has to go forward, like I said. These, this information can certainly be used for other grant applications in the future. But that really is not part of this, because it's part of the grant application, so.
Sure, I, I will say
There's tons of information that we have saved, like where we did a, a survey of some of the people on the green and people who sent in emails, and we have a consolidated email that we've shared with the council and, and there's a lot of input out there. It's just, I know it's not at the point where you're all ready to vote on. Yes, let's do it. No, let's not. But I know it's part of your, your goals, and that's where I was coming from when I was trying to pick it out.
Sure, I, uh, the reason I specifically ask about the letters of support is because it was directly related to this, this process that we're being asked to approve the grant application of. And at this point, if I understand it correctly, there have been members of our community who've been approached by the town manager's office to express their support for the application of a grant that the council has not yet approved the application of.
There was there was one person contacted regarding the historic district in my office. If that person asked other people, that was not me asking. I just asked one person just to try to have something on file for the grant application. And I reached out to one other person regarding the water project, but I never got a response from that person. And I also sent to the town council to ask to view if you wanted to share some sort of letter of support. And then the only other place I asked was some political level people's, Dan Champagne's office and I said to Tammy, but I haven't received a response from your office yet, or maybe you did send something.
Let her know tomorrow morning.
All right, yeah. I sent it through your, through the state, not through here. So that, that, but as far as reaching out to many citizens, I did not. I reached out to one person on the sidewalk who did speak to other people, because when she sent her letter back, she had many signatures on it. And I'm trying to remember what else the, uh, the parks one I didn't. The jail, oh, I'm sorry, yes, the jail. I also reached out to Kathy Bach on the jail, because she's been directly involved with that whole process that we've been going, meeting on, going through, getting information. So I did reach out to her as well.
Okay, and I, I, I would say I in reading this email, and I've read it a couple of times, I didn't read this as a request to me or the council to also provide letters. So I apologize personally, I did not I didn't read that your email is a request for us to provide, for me to provide a letter. It, it says you shared it with various residents within the community. So I, you know, from a process point of view, I, I understand that you have been put in a very tight spot here in terms of, you know, meeting aggressive timeline. And I have some concerns about activating community support for something before it's come before the council, I, I think that puts, that also makes me feel a bit uncomfortable. Do, does the town have the capacity to fully apply for the grants? Because it sounds like the process for this week is preliminary and then down the road, it would be more in-depth?
No, from my understanding, unless something else comes about, the applications are completed. They're going anywhere unless the council says to. But they were, they did take a lot of time to put together. And from my understanding, they go to Congressman Courtney's office, and from there he takes them and they decide how they're going to move, what they'll move forward, and if they move forward, then let's see what happens through the process. But I don't understand that there would be any other additional documentation. There could be some supplementary information that they ask for, that, that is certainly something that might happen, but I'm not aware of any other intensive documents to be pulled out at least.
Okay, and do we have the staff time and resources to administer these grants if they are awarded?
Depending on which ones, yes.
Which ones don't we have the capacity to handle?
The water one.
Okay.
Right now, the sidewalks would be a bit involved. Again, we'd have to see what the results of that study are and, and what would be involved if we're if we get the grant to pay for it, then there's, you know, different federal requirements that you have to go by. But something that large anyway, we would be going through the big process, we would be going through the prevailing wage process, all of that. So those are the things that have to have oversight. Adding on too many, many big things, that the parks garage, that would be a big project. I would have to have more than just our grants manager about that, the public works director would have to step up and, and do a little bit more managing with that. The jail, that one shouldn't be difficult at all. That's just basically getting some getting the paperwork. So that's the bidding process.
So we do have the staff capacity?
Yes.
To handle them, okay. And so, and I, I apologize, I'm, I'm still a little bit confused, because if we're applying for a grant and we're providing all the information for the grants this week, what exactly are we applying for, for the sidewalks?
What we provided, what we put in the application was to provide, and here's the other thing, are we going to go with ADA accessibility to the historic district? That's been the request, that was part of your goals. Now, if it's not supposed to be part of your goals, maybe we have to get your goals revised, but um what we put forward for the sidewalk one was to provide ADA accessibility within the historic district of this area here. That's what we put forward. Now, that could also include repairing certain things, but ADA accessibility is very specific that for example, the sidewalks that are out here, the granite sidewalks, they are certainly not wide enough. I mean, if you see them, they're like this. They are, even a person without a disability can have some difficulty walking and not tripping. There, there are some trip hazards. Some of the people wanted to have, you know, maybe them evened out, relayed, things like that. We were told that it may not work. So what we put forward was more of an ADA to provide some sort of ADA sidewalks. Now, if it's not on this side, maybe you repair what you can on this side. And on the other side, where the town owns more of that, then maybe that's where it could be addressed, but with no specific beyond just giving a high level overview of that under an ADA.
Okay. I think those are all the questions I have right now. Thank you very much.
And you, Councilman Murray, Councilman, you have a question?
Once again, all because I listen to everybody, so. I think it's a great one, but if I remember right, they're supposed to keep doing their fundraising for their second field, right? I hear the trust fund's a good idea, but I think that's the concern of residents. Feel that we'll end up taking on, taking care of the field. That's just the concern I have.
Yeah, with the, with the sinking fund, the skies, whether other actually come to fruition in terms of having like that build up year over year to replace it when it needs to be.
So let's give them a head start.
So we, the town would be helping.
The town, if, if we have the grant, the grant.
Right.
Yeah.
The first part, and then everything they have now would become the ten-year replacement.
Okay, just making, so again, I'm worried about the field. I'm just concerned that it will look like the town is now maintaining their field by you know, putting money from grant into a trust fund.
That's, I don't know how residents The money from the grant cannot go into the trust fund. So
It would be, it would be to build it first, and so that whatever money that they've raised at this point would be, or to assist them in building it first, is my understanding. And then any money, any savings that they would see could then be put into that trust fund to help them start that trust fund, so that they're not first building it and then trying to fundraise to continue to contribute to that trust fund. This way, it would sort of reduce the amount that they have to come up with upfront.
The, the only thing that comes to mind that I'm thinking about with the Miracle Field is what if and I, the study is not complete yet, but what if the study comes out with and put the Miracle Field somewhere else other than Birch Grove? Then you may have, and I'm not saying if it will or not, but the Miracle Group may decide that, you know what, we want Birch Grove, maybe we won't go somewhere else.
Well, yeah.
I don't know.
Yeah, I think that the discussions that we have with, I mean, I guess we're, I may be putting her for the horse
Again.
On this, but is that the discussion was they, they were looking at Birch Grove primarily because of the cost savings. And that was always the main issue is that Birch Grove would have the cost saving because of the infrastructure already present. But it didn't, I mean, but I think that with the results of the discussions, where if there was a way that we could find that would be economically feasible for it to be somewhere else, you know, in any of the number areas, that that was something that would be examined at that point in time.
True, but then, you know, what if, what if it falls through? That's my only concern with the, and certainly again, it's all up to you. But just my thought here is that what if it does fall through and then if we got the grant? What do we do?
Right? Miracle Fields and Organizations, you just contact them and say.
Yeah. All right, I'm, I'm just playing devil's advocate here, or whatever you want to call it, but it's just a thought.
So the Commission of People of Disability for sidewalks, I know that's here, so that's great. I'm connected to the same concerns as Katie, I guess, is we don't know, yeah, how they feel, the historic district. My question is, say we get money. Can we then meet, I don't want to have a joint meeting with them, but then if we do, if we wanted some money for it, can we sit with them afterwards and figure out the three, you know, stakeholders or groups use that money to spend on the sidewalks? Or do, or is it very specific from Courtney's office that we have to use the money?
The way we apply, we haven't applied for it, but the way we wrote the application was to address ADA accessibility. So if, for example, if the three groups decide, they talk about it and say, well, you know what? Maybe we don't do ADA accessibility, but we level out the stones. And maybe shave down the stones and replace them with some that might look like granite or be similar, but they're not where they're totally broken, then I'd have to look at.
I think that's considered ADA accessible because it's, it's, it's making it, you know, it's, it's still making it safer and it's making it better than what it is.
It is, but ADA accessibility, especially in the historic district, has special rules as far as how wide they have to be, and those stones don't come in that particular.
And if you're taking money, you're going to come with more strings.
Right.
Um, the only thing that maybe we should kind of address too, in this, it says that the project must be for fiscal year two thousand twenty-three for just one year, and that was, I wasn't sure we were a hundred percent ready to, for the sidewalks, because we haven't decided what we're doing, how we're doing, and what the cost is to that. But
But are we even, I mean, we're not at fiscal year twenty twenty-three yet.
No, but we can only do it in one year, so we just have to quickly.
We apply now and then.
We'll have to quickly commit.
If it's approved, we will have to, if, if we get the whole one point two million, then also all we need is for the town council to
But that also means that we have until, I mean, basically, federal fiscal year is October.
I know, it's
For October twenty, basically, October twenty twenty-three, so that gives us
Twenty-two.
No.
October first to September.
Yeah, fiscal year twenty twenty-three, so that would be
October through September.
Yeah, so that means that we would have essentially, you know, a year and a half to, from now to, to move forward.
Well, we would have to move, if, let's just I don't see them moving fast or anything, but let's say they approved it for October first for the, the twenty-two, twenty-three fiscal year. That means we would have to get moving on it.
Right, September thirty-one, twenty twenty-three.
Well, we'd have to be moving on it before that, because it's a one-year grant, you'd move very quickly. So we would have to say, okay, October first, they approve it, we start moving October second thereabouts, and start getting that project moving, get it appropriated, move forward with having it ready to go.
But I mean, again, we're meeting in the next several, or the next month or two.
Sidewalks is June twenty-nine.
June, then Miracle Field is May, so both those are relatively, you know, close things. I'm sorry. I'm sorry, this is your turn.
So that's okay.
We're a good team here.
Can you clarify then, the amount of money that we potentially would be awarded?
For the sidewalks, I think I put one point two million.
I mean, overall, like.
Oh.
Is there a cap, I think, with?
I think it was a range of three hundred thousand was the lowest you could get up to four million was the highest. So it's not, the chances of getting more than one grant, I don't know, and maybe we'll get one or two.
So we have to go to our appropriation committee.
Right.
And when we applied for funding years ago, we asked for seven hundred thousand, they gave us a hundred and ninety. So you don't know when they had to be up all the plus money.
So we're applying for the, the non-matching grants, so either it gets approved or not.
So. Means, I guess, messed up, but is it better just go, I mean, that's a great idea for everybody. Is it better just to go with a couple than like four or five? Or you put four or five and see which one gets more?
Well, that's kind of where I was headed when I was trying to find a few heavy hitters and we can't do too many either. I started adding up too many, but she says Katie, Councilor Murray was referring to, that could get a little overwhelming too, to try to manage it. But, um, you know, I was trying to put in a few just to see if maybe one would come out of it. Because I'm sure there's other, other entities supplying as well.
So I definitely like, Public Works, I'm a really big Public Works fan this year, but I've seen safety issues there. Anybody else in your team, but it's literally on top of whatever a gas balloon takes. But I think it's really unsafe. I think it's important that they have a safe place to take a break. You guys like the turf, the turf field idea, I think that's a good one. Concern with the sidewalks as well, just because when we talk about it, commissioning people with disabilities, but that's why I asked about the money. We knew how much we were going to get, and then we can have a further conversation with everybody. Think I would feel more comfortable with that.
We don't, we don't know.
We don't.
That's why I picked four.
Right.
The, the, the water one, I was thinking, well, if we could get something, but then again, if we're not ready to move on that one, that's really, you know, it's, it's too high.
Yeah.
Of a project to try to deal with that for this particular grant.
Like eight hundred right there in the, obviously the jail museum.
Yeah.
The miracle field, I just, I guess that everybody thinks it's a good one, and before, but my concern is we don't know one, if they want to stay, like, come here, we don't know what's going to be put. I mean, we'll chance you could put in another soccer field because I've always complained about not enough fields.
You know, I, we do, remember increased recreation field.
Yeah.
There's only so much we could do in one day, though, that's, that's my problem right now. I really can't throw much at Lissa tomorrow because she's still dealing with, we're still trying to get our ARPA reporting done as well, and we're having some issues with that. Because there's a report due this month, and we're having technical difficulties with making it work. But, um, so there's a lot of challenges right now. The, um, the miracle field, I understand that, I understand the trust. You know, the turf field, that's something that's in our capital plan. I don't know either one, if either one would be one of those non-matching grants. So you would have to be ready to appropriate funds if we were to do that, and if they were not a matching grant. Or, you know, if they say, all right, we'll give you two hundred thousand, you had to come up with the other six hundred and fifty thousand and whatever the difference is. You know, we, we'd have to be ready to move on that.
Can we rank these when we vote on them? Do we vote on them separately?
I'm sorry?
Can we rank them?
Sure, you can do whatever you'd like. You know, you come to a consensus of what you want to move forward and then create a resolution regarding that. You know, if you, however you all feel comfortable, or if there's ones that are, you know, close to the heart that you put it out there and put a separate resolution for each, you know, whichever you'd like to do, I can help you with that if you like, but.
And I guess my last question or statement, I think you mentioned community support and letters and such. Would it be in the best interest that when we apply, that, you know, the joint letter from the council showing we support these things, would that help the process setting?
Well, yeah, I mean, your vote this evening is going to say, kind of show that you support with whatever you vote on. So we can also just have a letter, maybe something.
For the minutes.
Something like that, say something we do or don't. You know, I, I, the more I'm thinking about this here, adding these projects, I don't know how quickly I could get letters of support and all of this application done by tomorrow. That's my only concern. And, um, now the turf field, hopefully when we get closer to that, there may be some state recreation outdoor funds, there might be something there. We had a few different ones. You know, if, if this grant comes around again, if we're lucky, maybe we try again. But I, I think by adding, I mean, we could take a shot at it, but I'm a little nervous about trying to get all the support that we need.
Don't we have most of that for the turf field though? Because like, I thought you guys already had two quotes.
Oh, yeah, we have the quotes.
We have the quotes.
But the letters.
Asking for it and.
Yeah, the, the, a letter from a citizen helps. There's no way I'd be able to get it from Champagne's office this quick here.
Yes, we would.
Yeah, but I'd be, maybe, you know, but whatever you decide to move forward with, I would make.
I can get a letter from her. Person who helped her the first time, for sure.
I would need it by tomorrow, if, if you all vote on this.
Yeah. It's like before, regardless, second time, Councilor, do you have any questions or? I'm going to ask a couple of questions, so we would, it would be all or nothing, because as mentioned, there's no matching funds, so we apply for, you know, one, two as an example. Would we end up getting a hundred thousand or zero, or are you saying that there's a possibility?
No, they could, they could say if you picked the park's garage and the jail, say if you bought those two projects. And you put them both out there, the appropriations goes to appropriations may only be the jail or may only be the park's garage. We'll, we'll send them several applications and then at that point, your congressman's Courtney's office will decide what, if any, they're willing to push forward.
And I know they'll only like handle a little process, but from there, they're probably going to go through their own procedures. And so, you know, we can apply for this if it could end up being pulled out in some way or another, so we can apply and say, we're in the next phase and then it doesn't come to fruition anyways.
Well, and, and this is more around like HUD requirements. HUD requirements are very stringent and there's a lot of rules. It's not only, you know, state prevailing wages, but federal prevailing wages, which.
Environmental reviews.
Yeah, environmental reviews, there's, there's a lot of stuff that goes on. Just add to the project.
I think I'm okay with one and two, and I'm getting towards being okay with, with three. I mean, I think just from my personal perspective, it's been a goal of the last council term, it's an ongoing goal for this term, I think. There's a few different avenues that are, that will probably be discussed. And just personally, I think it's a, it's a good, a good project to try and go for. I know there's a lot of concerns, but I would be willing to if we get to that point of breaking up reservation one to do a separate vote on just the sidewalks, so that everyone has a fair chance to say what they feel about it. The park's garage improvements, the turf field, I would, I would also be in favor of, but I do have concerns about rushing it. The only other concern I think I have is if you said four millions the max, and we're, you know, it's one point one, two, five million plus, you know, one and a half, we're kind of at, we're, we're kind of pushing up, or if there isn't a hard cap, you know, like, I think it was like eight hundred thousand for the replacement.
Each, each.
Each, each project, okay.
I think it's a, each project.
Okay, so each project.
The turf was probably about eighteen hundred, nine hundred seventy-five.
No, but each project, I thought it was cumulative, that's why there was initially.
Oh, no, no, I think it's for each one, the minimum you can ask for is three hundred thousand maximum, and the maximum is like four million.
So in that case, I would be fine with adding the, the turf fields. And I think I was going to be okay with moving forward with Miracle Fields, but I know it might need separate votes, I think. My concern with the Miracle Field might be a location where the discussions happen in May, you know, because I think one of the conversations we had at one point in our last meeting or a regular meeting was, I think there was a location near Cross Farms that could be used, but there were issues of wetland. If these funds went towards potentially remediating that area, it would then create a new additional spot for the field near ADA accessible.
Mm-hmm.
That, I think that's a potential for where the funds could go, but, you know, I think.
But you'd have to have a specific plan that we can forward, just like we're trying to do with other stuff.
Kind of want a location of, you know.
Yeah.
Together, we usually put where the location is.
Yeah, I think there's a location that might.
If you don't know. Yeah.
Yeah, to me, the Miracle Field, then I, just back kind of out, I think the Miracle Field would be fast, I think we already know where the high school turf field is going to be, it's already an existing infrastructure and we have plans, so I guess I'd be okay adding just the turf field, but we can certainly vote on adding the, the Miracle Field, like, everyone's kind of.
The.
For a second, I'll, I'll choose your response.
Just quickly, on the turf field, the other advantage of that one is that it would eliminate what we'd be issuing for debt. So it reduces the impact on the citizens for future debt, but that's.
Which is another benefit of the garage too, because the garage.
Same thing with the garage.
Yeah, and I think eventually probably the, the jail museum probably could be a, a potential capital project or use some kind of funding.
Well, yeah, I never expected it to be as, as high as. Yeah, I thought it was just going to be a couple repairs, put a new, new one. When I found out, I was like, this is a lot bigger than I ever thought.
So I guess the summary is, I, I would be okay with one through three and then adding turf field as, the high school turf, athletic turf field is a fourth item to apply for, but I left the store and then Councilor LuMander came up for a second time.
Sam, did you have a question now?
I don't think he did, though, I think it was just, yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Jim. Yeah, I mean, this is one of those unusual times where I'm always one that's saying, hey, we need to do our due diligence and that we really need to be careful and really, uh, and look at things. But this one where, I mean, we're, for unfortunate reasons, we're in a very short timeframe. And thi- this is something that, while I understand all the concerns, that there's no harm in asking, and that's what I'm saying is that, if, especially if it's an, especially, I mean, and I understand that this is what, you know, additional work with, with your, with your office, but this is something where, uh, for the, uh, for the projects that we're looking at, like a turf field is one that I think that is not going to be a big lift. At least I hope it wouldn't be a big lift to get that added in, because I think that there's general consensus for that about supporting it. We've already done the studies, we already know what the costs are going to be, so it's just a matter of putting that together. For the, uh, the Miracle Field, I understand the concerns, I understand, and I understand, uh, with, uh, Councilman Murray, the concern that she presented before and about, uh, about the sidewalks and everything as well as Councilman Mutichack. But I think it's something that if we can go forward with it and put it forward, I mean, they can say no. And that's the one thing is that, you know, if, and if they say yes, then, okay, that gives us the impetus to actually move forward and, 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 and put, do due diligence to try and get these projects going. They're, they're already at, for both, I mean, for pretty much all the projects that we've discussed. They're at the, you know, I would call it seventy-five percent to eighty percent examined. Or some of the things that there's, they can go for the Miracle Field, it's identifying the location. Now, I understand that's a significant thing, but at the same time, that once we get that done, then it's a matter of, okay, moving forward. Uh, for the, uh, for the sidewalks, again, how it's done is, is going to be an issue, that's something that we need to discuss. But at the same time, I think that it's something that we all agree that needs to be done, something needs to be done in some way. And because what, I mean, the one point is looking at it from, from a liability standpoint, you know, we've already had, you know, issues regarding these sidewalks already, and people falling on the sidewalks and exposing ourselves to liabilities to town. So this is something where I think that this is the one time where, you know, we go forward, we put together what we can. It may not be the hundred percent resolution, it may not be the best thing that we can put together, but we're in no worse condition than we are now, because we still don't have that money. Where they may be something where I've been in these projects before where you submit it and people find, hey, okay, this may not be the hundred percent answer that we have or that we want, this may not be everything, but this is enough merit. So we're going to contact them and say, hey, look, couldn't you provide this additional information and then we could go from there? So, I mean, my whole thing is, I'd rather, you know, go forward with these requests and have them tell us, no, sorry, you don't have enough together, that us cancel, canceling it all ourselves and not even having this opportunity, because again, we don't know if this one's going to be available again next year. We don't know if that's going to be there, and so why not try and take advantage of a funding source that would, could add significant value and bring forward some, some major projects that we all agree should be, should be brought forward. That's just my thoughts. Thank you.
I would make the suggestion then, rather than saying it's the miracle field. We know the study is being done and all of that, and we've heard from the sports organizations already that they were very put out by not having the Birch Grove field, they had canceled games, canceled practices, et cetera, et cetera. So I would say, rather than saying this is Miracle Field, then if we put in something for recreational field development, or even remediation of recreational field development. And it's kind of linked it to that, you could say that we're looking to put in a miracle field, but not say it's a miracle field grant. Maybe that's something to consider, um, from a town perspective. We have land that residents behind Parker that hasn't been used for a while. I don't know what they're doing with that, if we could look to remediate that, that area there to make it more for a soccer field or something like that. Or as Bev said, and as, as Steve said, you know, that whole area down by Adams Adventure is really the best place ever. But we know that the cost to level that land and clear it and make it all usable is prohibitive. That's why, that is specifically what they said when Steve and them came and said, that would be their ultimate place, but it's going to cost too much money to do all the work that needs to be done. So if we make it more general about recreational field development, that might be an opportunity.
My only concern with that is that we don't have enough information to share with a grant application. That, that.
I would love to have the recreational field development.
I know, but it's just, if, if we had more time, that's the problem. I, I have one day.
Yeah.
And, you know, so please don't mention anything tonight.
Can help in any way you need help with, you know, like that one there.
If that ends up on the agenda tonight, I am going to need some help with getting some support on that. It, it all depends where you go tonight with this, some of this I already have information ready to go, others I may have, you know, scramble.
About the miracle field where, where Cross Farms, isn't Chuck studying that right now about the ADA accessibility to that area?
He's studying everything, yes.
Would he have any information?
Not yet.
But I know he doesn't have a full report.
He just met with the Board of Education. He met with the Parks Department, and I think he met with the miracle group. And he still has to get the report put together, and hopefully we'll have it all done for May, before May fifth, so we can have it on the agenda. It's not done yet.
Just want to have one quick question. Try to discuss it, or we did discuss it in the, um, the Disability Committee. Who is responsible for the sidewalk, for maintaining, is it the town or?
That was an early Sunday morning text.
Searching a lot of. Reading lots of states.
It's technically, it depends, right, because that so many feet is the homeowner's responsibility. And then so many feet is the town's responsibility. And I would definitely encourage anybody who was not on the council before to go back and review the minutes, because this has been talked about. Several times in the last couple of councils with the issues there and people with the historic district and the Commission on People with Disabilities and everybody else in that. And we did a walk, like, we had people out there, we had shipper here, we had, like, we've looked at this repetitively, so. That's a tough one, because you're you're dancing on a line there between the property owner and the town responsibility. And it's a state road, so it's not even, yeah, like.
The town doesn't own. Any of these sidewalks on the side except what's in front of town hall, and we're responsible for maintaining that, if you notice. They're not historic sidewalks, so. But.
I mean, historically.
That was part of the state, I think, did part of that.
I think when they built, yeah, I think when they built, when they built the building, they wanted something modern, so they purposely put in, you know, modern sidewalks, but. I think Councilman Muji had another question.
I was gonna, the, um, the, the sidewalks, that one there, um, I'm totally supportive of that one, because regardless of. Which direction we take, we've already looked at like four or five different options, whatever they come back with, we've we've gotta do something there. Um, you know, it is part of our goals and, um. I think that's something we've made a commitment to the town to look at that and try to do something there, so this. One point two million to me, um, it will be utilized. And it will be used in a way that's gonna be beneficial to the town, and it will also be. It will also be something that will come off of our long-term debt and planning, so you know me, any one-time expenses that I can get from anywhere else. That helps us from a debt perspective, um. Absolutely, on that, so i- if if I had to pick for the four, I would definitely, the turf field would be. My next priority after, um, one, two, and three. And then, you know, even if we were even able to get rid of. One of those things off of our debt plan, we would have more wiggle room with the Miracle Field anyway, so to me, um. Well, except for the jail, because that wasn't on any two before, that one just came out of left field and. That's, but another kickball game, but this, I think is good.
Are there any other questions or comments? I have a suggestion on it, there's no other discussion, resolution one. I would propose we do as, that as a resolution for, I think there's no objection. Parks and facility improvements, the jail and the high school athletic turf field is one resolution. It'd probably be a new resolution three. Of the historic district sidewalks, and there's more contention on that for a separate vote, and then resolution two is on the altar, accused myself for. Does that sound fair?
I'd like, I'd like to have, you know, the Miracle Field at least addressed as well.
Okay, so then we can do a fourth resolution for the Miracle Field. Of course, that'll be fine.
Do, do we?
Is that, at least, are you, are you good with that?
Are we going to be moving forward with resolution two?
So resolution two will have to still have a vote, I believe, unless Lisa wants to be up.
You you don't even have to take.
Or we just don't take action.
Just don't even vote on it.
Okay, so there isn't that option.
Yeah, I don't, personally, my, I don't think we need resolution two, I think that's outside the scope of the, of the, um, of the request from.
He certainly suggested.
Yeah.
So.
So then, so, yeah, so is everyone good with resolution one, doing a, a, uh, voice for, uh, parks, facility, garage, old jail. And, you know, like, first, the high school athletic turf field. Do you want me to? I then change a motion to approve draft, draft resolution one as amended.
I'll make that motion, one second.
I think, is there any further discussion?
You need to reset, or re- restate that.
That one I got.
Okay.
In the YouTube.
Yes.
Yes, thank you.
I'm sorry, I have a question.
Yes.
About that, so Lisa, um, just to reiterate. The process for adding the turf field to the grant application, you would first find out if it was. Eligible for non-matching funds, right, that we were not required to have matching funds. So if if we are required to have matching funds for that project, what happens then?
Unless there's a. Commitment on behalf of the council that is willing to. Fund any differential. And I know you can't vote on that tonight, but if if there's no commitment going forward, there's no way I can authorize. Moving forward with any sort of a grant project if. If the hundred percent funding isn't identified ahead of time.
So should we? I mean, should we modify this resolution to include that turf field if. It does not require matching funds?
I, I, I guess I'm concerned, I thought it was kind of under the assumption that all of these were not matching, so it's kind of assumed that anything we're applying for would require match. But so that if you.
But there's different grants, we're we're going under the non-matching, and there are other grants under this program.
Okay.
That allow for, you can apply. But you'll have to match some of the funds, we went after ones that we don't have to match.
Okay.
So that, that's the only thing, I don't have the grant information with me as to whether this particular one. Would be a matching grant or not, but I can, if you approve it and you want me to look into it, we can try to fast track tomorrow morning. On trying to determine, is it, and I mean, if, um. If there's a, I mean, there's a, there's a capital plan commitment for the future, but if this came through quickly. Then you would have to get an appropriation in place if it's approved.
Isn't the capital plan, though, next year's capital plan, what you have it in, so it would be appropriately.
So, so it would be, when you move forward with the bond authorization next year, there's a whole process that.
Right, yeah.
Then then it would be approved, so.
It's in the, we have it in the plan for, for the calendar year.
Because, yeah, that doesn't make sense, because then ultimately, if you had the match, it's fifty, fifty match, that would stay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, as long as I, there's an understanding that. You know, that stays in the capital plan next year.
So, eh, Mr. Chair, I'm sorry, I, if if I may, eh, I think then the best way to handle this is if we are for draft resolution number one. That is to just deal specifically with the parks, facility, garage, uh, and the old jail. And just leave it at that, and then. The, uh, second, my proposal would be the second resolution would be, is for the turf field, I I know, you're, you're gonna kill me. But no, uh, the, is the second, the second will be the, uh, the turf field. All for both, uh, for, was it matching as well as non, uh, non-matching. Funding. So that, because that way it makes it clear, and then the third one would be for the historicistic sidewalks. Again, I would assume that would be for matching only. At this point. No, I'm sorry, no, no matching, no matching, thank you, and then the fourth one would be for the, uh.
No, we're not doing the fourth one.
We're not doing the fourth one.
Well, the fourth one would be the Miracle Field, I think.
Miracle Field four with, uh, with a no matching as well.
All right, so we'll, we'll settle for a moment, I think, uh, at this point we have to withdraw.
I'm gonna withdraw that, that my approval on that.
Yeah, so with the resolution and I would entertain a motion to approve draft resolution one amended to only include the parks, facility, garage improvements and the. Old jail.
I'll shut in there.
So, motion made by Councilor Luba, is there a second?
No.
Second, if I can, sorry, Nuccio. No other discussion?
Yeah.
All those in favor signify by, oh, yeah.
Five seconds.
Yes.
No. Wait, I wanna add something.
I'm gonna kick him for you, Lisa, he's close, I can kick him. Probably thrust him, yeah. He doesn't have a pen, and that's probably a deadly weapon in his hand, so I'm gonna scooch over by Stevie and kick him. I can kick him.
So.
No, Cammy's.
Okay, we're ready, thank you.
All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that is unanimous, so draft resolution two would mirror what draft was, resolution one is, but. Be distinct in that it is for the high school artificial turf field for matching or non-matching, uh, grants.
In, I would refer to the capital improvement plan funding.
Yeah.
To cover if it's a non-matching.
Yeah.
In that resolution.
Yeah, so.
All right.
I I I think I, I'll track this, and so, since you can't make the risk, so, uh, I guess we'd be resolved that by the Talon Town Council, hereby authorized the interim town manager Lisa A. Hancock. Order just need to make application for this year twenty twenty-three community project funding through Congressman Courtney's office. For the Talon High School turf field. For. Non, no matching, as well as matching funds. That would be supplemented by the fiscal year twenty twenty-three capital budget fund.
Or improved plan.
Or improved plan.
Okay.
Got that, Lisa.
Councilor Luba has made that motion, is there a second?
No, no.
Seconded by Councilman Mutichack. Is there any further discussion? All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, no extensions, that's unanimous, so, resolution three. Would read Lisa the same as the first two resolutions, but it would be for the historic district sidewalks. All right, is there a motion?
A motion, no.
Motion by Councilman Nuccio, is there a second?
I'll second.
All right. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions?
I have stand.
So I think that is a six zero one vote. Or five, five zero one, sorry, sorry, John, but you're here. All right, uh, resolution four would be the same as the past, except it would be for the, uh. Miracle field, or was it for the Miracle Field?
For the Miracle Field.
Okay. So I can change a motion for that.
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
A second, I was waiting for you, I went still that time.
I was thinking on that.
All right. All right, is there any further discussion?
Still little concerns because it hasn't been completed in the study. This is a really tough one, so maybe you'll help me. It vents me a little more, I guess.
I don't, I don't probably vote now, I think it'd be good to do a roll call, though, do I, it's just, it's clear to Lisa, so.
I guess, again, uh, you know, for, if I may, Mr., the the pitch is, again, I understand the concerns, I understand that there's. That there's a lot of concerns regarding that there's no finalized plan, there's no. That we don't have the granularity that we'd all feel comfortable with, but I think this is an opportunity where. We don't know when this fund's gonna become available again, we have a seventy-five percent goal at this point, where that there's a study being done. That we will be voting on come May fifth. Or at least discuss, at least discuss, at least discuss it, and that if it's something that, I mean, eh eh, I don't know, and this is something that maybe could be addressed is. If, when, after we propose it, we decide that on May fifth, which is only a matter of, you know, less than a month after we submit this. If we, that we don't have any agreement in it whatsoever, then we withdraw that part of the application. If you can, but I'm just saying that this is something where it gives us the opportunity to move forward on some funding that is not otherwise available, and I don't see. Possibly becoming available again, uh, in in the future, so that's just my, my pitch. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Luba, Councilor Muji, and Councilor Perry.
So I'm kind of looking at it this way, I'm committed to making it. I'm committed to find a way to make it, and whether that means, you know, looking at the study and. They say it's at Birch Grove and we have to find someplace else to put all the others, all the other sports fields, or they say, no, the best place would be Adam's Adventure, and. We know that's gonna be too much money for Miracle Field and we have to find a way to do that, or they say it would be best, uh, here or there. To me, I'm just looking for a way to make it happen, so if this gives us the flexibility. And if it gave us the money, which we have there, the plan that they had from a dollar perspective, we know how much they were looking at. To invest into this, so if this gives us some of that money to go towards that and then create that sinking fund. Which will help the town and help the Miracle League going forward to replace future fields, to me. I can make it work, I can, I can find a way to make it work, that's, that's how I'm looking at this vote, is, yeah, I think there's a lot still up in the air, but, um.
Some of the other. Teams that are.
That's why, that's why I am specifically, that's why I'm saying, if we were to apply for this, this gives us more leeway, right, because. In my head, the way I'm going down this is we're gonna get this report back and. We're, we're gonna have, we have shortages of fields, you know, I've talked to, like, I've talked to like four different. Yeah, different sporting organizations and things that have happened, and to me, I wanna do it, but I have a feeling we're gonna have a shortage somewhere, so. This is kind of a way to help make that for me, it's, it's not an either or, I just think it's a, it's an opportunity, and this is the thing. We're putting this information out there, Courtney's office is gonna go through this and decide which projects they think they want to do before they go forward with it, so. It's an ask at this point, I'll throw out, and many asks, and I can't, it's gonna, if it's gonna yield us even one, that's my logic on it.
So, again, they, that. You know. She said, you wanna, you wanna somebody to try to sell you on it.
It's a valid concern.
Yep.
Lisa, do we have the time and staff capacity to add Miracle Field to this grant proposal?
I do have a concern. And all together, my other concern here with the Miracle Field. Is if it's not, you know, if you have to match the grant. There's so many things up in the air with this one. Totally, let me start by saying I totally support the Miracle Field and what they're trying to do, totally a hundred percent behind that project. In my opinion, um, my concern is that if this grant is approved and it's approved as a, if it's even eligible, as a non. As a matching grant. Then we have to be able to work with the Miracle Group. They're not here to represent themselves, to say, oh, yeah, we'll give you whatever cash we have currently raised. Turn that over to you if you build the field, I mean, certainly that would be a win for them, but we don't have that commitment.
I'm sorry, if I may, I I, I mean, my, I thought my proposal would be is a, it was a non-matching. Yeah, I I, it was something that was not pursued, but not pursued as a matching, but it would be non-matching only.
Okay, I misunderstood that, that's where I was getting concerned.
So that's why I just wanna make sure.
There's a match, I'm concerned.
Non-matching.
Okay, non-matching, do you have that?
That wasn't in the resolution.
Okay, so you're amending your.
Yes, I would, I would amend that.
Well, I think, I thought you said the, like you said, the mirror after the first resolution, the first resolution was matched.
Yeah.
Oh, the first one.
Yeah, I, I have.
I'm sorry, that was my misunderstanding.
Mirror after the first resolution, which was the first two.
Right, so as long as it's matching, I mean, non-matching, I'm more confused.
Lisa needs help.
I'm sorry.
We're all confused, Lisa. Sorry, I have on the first resolution, I do not have anything about matching the park facility garage and the old jail, is that correct?
They're, they're non-matched, but they, they, they're the non-matched.
They already presented as non-matched.
Right, and, and in the second resolution, it specifically states as well as matching funds, that would be supplemented.
Matching or non-matched.
For the second.
Correct.
The third resolution, yeah. Is non-matched, that's the sidewalks.
Yeah.
And the fourth resolution.
Would be non-matched.
Non-matched, okay, okay, now, now, getting this, if, if this passes. They've got them all, okay?
Wouldn't that be great? Don't make that face.
Well, it's just, it's just to, to Councilor. Well, it's just, it's just to, to Councilor Murray's comment. We would need to make sure that staff is in place to be able to, like, the Miracle Field, I, I know that, uh, they're behind the project to make sure that they would be behind, be behind that project moving forward.
Lisa, would you, we would also have to check with grant application whether it would be an eligible activity? I think it will, but that's something we have to consider.
Well, that's. Yeah.
Does it make sure?
And for some reason, that it's not, that it's not eligible, you just notify us that it's something that's an impossibility.
That's what we could do. Just as long as I don't have to commit to town funds. I mean, I'll still have to have you, if the grants are awarded, we'll appropriate it, but it's in a different way.
And they could give you just small portions of the grant like they just passed, so that's something. Back to say. They're ordering two hundred thousand.
I'm sorry, Councilor Murray, please, so that's four.
So, um, thank you, Lisa. I just want to confirm that with the addition of the turf field, there's also staff, appropriate staff time and capacity to also include Miracle Field in this grant application. Or, right.
It, it's going to be trying to pull, we have to do this all by tomorrow. Thursday morning, the latest. And, uh, there's going to be a lot to pull together. I don't know if we can do it. We can make an attempt. But there's, there's a lot to pull together because we've got two, one, two more grants that we haven't. So.
One.
So far, so far we've approved one more.
No, no, no. Oh, yes, but I mean, if you go with Miracle Field, that would be two more that we have to pull together. I'm a little nervous about making that happen. Try, my concern moving forward is if we have Parks Facility Garage, if that gets approved, the jail, that's not, we can make that happen. But the, the facility garage will be a big project to manage. I would hope, and again, I don't have the board event here, that they can manage the athletic turf field that between they were, they were somewhat involved last time, but Beverly was involved and I don't think I. So, you know, so to be able to
May Peter.
Commit, yeah. Well, that's, I mean, Peter's there, he's, he's got a lot on his plate. But so, you know, there, there's things that would have to be done. I don't know if we'd get, you know, if we'd even get all these. Can't hurt to try. If we can't make it happen, we have to find a way to make it. If we can't, if we don't have the staff to make it happen, we'll have to find a way to make it happen through cooperation with staff or if we have to hire someone to help, we may have to do that.
Uh, when it comes to the application, can we as a council consider prioritizing the application for the turf field first? If there's limited staff time over the next few days, can we make the Miracle Field the move, you know, prioritize, I guess, the turf field?
Yeah, I mean, I think if they're all approved, it was approved, it would have to be applied for, but I think, yeah.
No, I, I don't, I just mean for the application process over the next two days.
Yeah.
You know, Lisa's expressing concern about having the staff time to compile everything for both of these additions. Would, would we be willing to say that our priority for Lisa would be the turf field over Miracle Field if, if a decision like that has to be made?
Yeah, the thing on the vote goes, if it does pass, then, I think these conversations would probably be alluded to that Lisa would probably want to, is a lot more playwork turf field first and the Miracle Field second if it passes.
Your vote.
Okay. Is there any further discussion? Alright, seeing I'm going to do a, a roll call vote. Let's, so Councilman Uchio. I can, I can skip you if you want to pass and all start by ground. Correct, Councilwoman Luva.
Aye.
Councilor Uchio.
Aye.
Councilor Khan. You can abstain if you don't think you have enough information like Councilman Murray did for the.
I'm sorry, what was that?
Abstaining. I'm, no, I'm, I'm still no, I, I feel like I didn't even put more time to focus on the turf field. I think it's a object, so that's one, uh, one abstain and four ayes.
Well, I thought she was going to prioritize.
Yeah.
Well, now that we get that discussion at this point.
Yeah, and I think it's now, now it's passed, so it's assumed that prioritizing the turf field is the third and then the fourth is the Miracle Field.
Putting, yeah, I would, uh, if I may, it's true. Yeah, I think that that's doing the turf field since that's the one that's the most done, getting that first and foremost, and then whatever else we could put together for the Miracle Field. I mean, even if it's an incomplete package, just putting together what you can, enough to meet, meet the requirements. And then, you know, if it comes down to where there's a time crunch.
Well, I will need letters of support by tomorrow. For both of these fields. Okay?
Can somebody, aren't there enough letters of support in our minutes for Miracle Fields? There's a number of submissions.
But I would think we can use that for the, for the resident part of it and, and I can, uh, I'm.
We'll take it.
Yeah, individual counselors want to send letters of support based off of the vote, definitely. Alright, so that we are on to, sorry, back over here. Eight point four, which was the full vacancies. Appointments of vacancies on various municipal boards and commissions, eight point four eight is the Tom Water Commission side. I'm changing a motion to remove the appointment of Rob, Robert Paisley.
No.
We're not, we can't, that's too big.
No, I didn't know if it formally needs to be on that.
Don't even need to bring it.
Yeah.
Unless.
So, back to eight point four, so it was, uh, Robert Paisley due to Tom Water Commission. I'm gonna change a motion to approve their appointment.
I make a motion.
Motion by Councilwoman Luva, is there a second?
A second.
Seconded by Councilman Uchio. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, that is unanimous. Alright. Item number nine, old business, which there is none, so ten is the report of the interim town manager.
Let's see here. Okay, let me start with first note, regarding the talent green policy update. I, um, I shared, and I'm not sure if you've shared with the officers yet, if you were, John, I've shared the, um, maybe I shared it with everybody, the potential, uh, future meetings and things that are coming up at some point on agendas. I think I did share that with everyone. Just a couple things. So, the, the green policy, we are already looking at pulling information from the last time this was discussed. It was a lot of input from you, Councilwoman Luva. We've pulled all that documentation that after we're able to find it. And, uh, we're trying to consolidate all the information into one policy, including the, um, parking on the green for the farmer's market. I, I was told recently that they didn't want to do it anymore. Now I hear different. So, you, I was going to put it in there anyway, just in case they ever change their mind. We just get it all over with with one sweep with the total. So, I'll be bringing that forward to you. I'm not sure when we will get that. I have to see what happens, um, with the budget referendum. Now, um, I know I mentioned, just, just for a heads up, in the past, the, the town managers have noted that, you know, referendum is May third. If it should happen to fail, we have a quick turnaround time as to deciding what we want to do. The next night would be two, we wouldn't have enough time to, to, uh, notice a meeting for that next night. So, my thoughts are to tentatively put it on the special meeting agenda for the fifth, if that is okay with all of you. If we don't need it, we don't need it.
If, uh.
Right.
You know, if, if the resol, if the referendum passes, you know, which I, I hope it will. Um, if it passes, then we don't have to worry about it. If, if it doesn't pass, then we've got a lot of pass tracking to do. We have to order new ballots. We have to arrange people to come work for the polls. We have to make sure we get it advertised. Through all the legal requirements, we have to get the polling location. So, there's a lot. And we have to try to get new numbers for a book. So, if there's things that you're thinking about, I would suggest you're just getting ready, maybe talk about them just in case. I don't, you know, I don't foresee it failing, but then again, you never know until you get the vote. So, we have to be ready just in case and that, you know, I'm not saying either way that I think it's going to fail or I think it's going to pass. I, you know, I certainly hope it would be supported. Um, but I just wanted to give you that heads up as to why I'm, I'm recommending this. Certainly, if there's things any of you want to share with me, that's up to you. If there's ideas that you have, I need to keep them in a list. That's up to all of you, or you talk about it at an open meeting, however you want to do. If, if there's any thoughts of where I should be focusing, if, if something's going to be coming forward, so I can analyze it. Okay, um, alright. In your packet this evening is the quarterly financial report with an overview of where we're at with revenues and expenditures. So, I've included that information. On the weekend, I was fortunate to, uh, work with the Rotary Club and Jim Hutton from the Conservation Commission. I get agriculture all the time. And, um, I was contacted, uh, I don't know, a week or two ago from the Rotary and they wanted to make a donation of a tree to the town, uh, in their day of work and giving to the, to the different communities in the area. So, I connected with Jim Hutton and a beautiful, um, I, I forgot the name of the tree now.
Linden tree.
Thank you. A beautiful Linden tree was donated. They paid for it in full and Jim planted it in Sage Meadow. And that was dedicated over the weekend for the Rotary Club. So, just a little ribbon cutting and all that was. Um, so I thank them for their service and what they've done. Another thing that we've done in the town manager's office, I think the interest to Lu, uh, Councilwoman Luva's is the Veterans Flyers. We've worked with the Veterans Commission to help get them all printed and set them up with a machine to help hold and all that. And so, we, we were able to help them out with that as well as buying some of the things that they were hoping to get. So, since we couldn't get a budget together for them, we were able to get them some of the things they needed this year.
Thank you.
The last thing I have is in regards to the wall art on the back wall. I know. Well, here, here's, uh, I, I've spoken with, uh, Dr. Willett and the concern of trying to bring the actual pieces of art and getting them hung and getting them framed and coming back and getting them, taking them out. He's concerned he just doesn't have the staff time to be able to do that. However, um, what he was recommending was more of a digital copy. Maybe they can purchase something like this for the back wall that has, um, the, the pictures of each of the students, whatever they've, um, prepared, you know, painted, whatever they've done. And to have like a digital photo frame, a big one, on the back wall and they would, um, find the funds to, to purchase that device to make that happen in lieu of trying to get all the pictures framed and brought over and taken down because he feels he just can't accommodate that with the staff that he has. Not only that, he's concerned that if you're, you're stapling them to a wall or however you're putting them up, they're, they're getting damaged and, you know, maybe some of the children want to keep them or the parents, you know. Um, so that, that was his, um, recommendation. I, I wanted to get a feel for how each of you feel for something like that. If we could try to make something like that happen in place of what you're thinking.
I think that makes it a heck of a lot more expensive.
Uh, not from what we were looking at, trying to buy frames. Yeah. Buy frames, buying the, the staff time to put up this. This is just a stick. You stick it in the back of the the unit and it, and it shows them. He downloads it from a computer, you know, you just mail it.
These things, there's more color back there. I just feel like a screen would be like, what a great idea. It's very modern, but I feel like, right? But there's not actually really a lot of people in here to see it, but I think it's nice to see color. I, I don't know.
Well, I just know my kid, I, we first started talking about this. This was a me and Ashley thing. We were talking about it. And I know like when my daughters, they had a couple of times, they had their pictures up at the post office. You know, and we got a little thing in the, the lunchbox, your daughter's work is up at the post office. And when you went to the post office, it was just like pictures of that all the kids had done. It was up there for a short amount of time and I mean, we're checking it out. And the idea was just to kind of, like you said, to make it more, you know, this is where we do business. This is a government room. But, you know, we should be always remembering the whole community and that, and it would just be nice to have artwork.
What about, you know, color copies?
Well, we had, like, they used to stick on paper. Like, they didn't.
Scan, scan and print. You know, scan and print.
I mean, instead of like a TV.
Yeah, instead of a TV, getting like a board like that and just having the color copies that go, hey, this is, you know, from whoever and then you just scan, print, boom, right out.
See, the ours were magic. Like, they took the picture and then they put it on a big piece of construction paper and then they just put, buy it out of the Uchiyo.
He just doesn't have the time to be doing all of that. He doesn't have the staff to be able to come and, you know, put it up, take it down, get it back to the parents, all that. Whereas if you just get it once, one location, he gets the digital copies. That, that was his recommendation. If, you know, I, I can't, there's only so much I can do on my side with this. I can't force them to say, okay, well, you know, we want it all in picture frames or nothing. I, I could tell him that was, I did tell him that was the preference, but with what he's got on his plate, he just doesn't have the time to do it. So, it's up to all of you about you'd like to see it and I can share it.
Can I ask, so is it going to be from an art teacher that's going to be submitting these?
That was, that was what, that's what, you know, they did it.
They want a volunteer marine, but maybe we can take a stab at it and just get the information and mine out. I know Nancy did that at one point.
Honestly, like I said, literally, it's been, I, I don't know.
Somebody could tell me the teachers name, well, can reach out and.
Just pick up a new case.
Maybe get some granularity on it and then we'll.
Yeah, circle back.
I don't love the idea of the TV myself.
Was it Birch Grove?
I just think of.
Especially if it's kids' pictures.
I know. I know. Well, the whole idea of it was different grades. Like, you know, going through and saying, you know, like every month, there's, there's twelve months in the year. You pick a grade and that's the grade that's up at the month, kind of the thing. And it was just like, put it up in that originally when it came about. But I just think putting that there is.
I, I was going, my original thought was to put a bulletin board back. There's some work to this, you know, have our, our public works department build one. We painted the same color like this one and have it go across and then, you know, they could pin them up without framing them.
That, literally.
Like, that's what I had recommended and, you know, I, I could. We can talk about it.
I'm encouraging you to.
Not, not recently, but I, I would say, uh, at this point, I don't mind the idea of, of the digital board. It's not my preference, but they may be going back, having more conversations with Beth and then Lisa with Dr. Bull in the board of that's office about coordination, kind of the shared services that if they compile the information, send it to the town. The town can then print it out from our offices. The town staff can affix it for a given month and then one month's change. They take it down and rotate.
Students, maybe they can help us with they need to do community services. Hours, so maybe getting the kids involved.
Yeah.
And we'll figure.
Yeah, so, besides, I think he does an ongoing discussion, no worries, obviously, but.
I, I get that as guys are out there and they're doing the fields and they're doing everything else and I, I understand that. But maybe there's a way to figure it out.
Must be a couple dads out there.
New service.
Why are you looking at?
Yeah. None of my kids are in school.
And that, uh, I think that was everything I had to bring to you this time. Besides, we'll send a report you, or we have.
Are there any additional questions for Lisa for her manager's report? All right, seeing none, there is, I have 11 adoption of minutes. I believe there was one set of minutes that needed to be corrected, and great council, we need to check it.
Yeah.
So which one was that? And so maybe you, maybe you can vote for the rest and then do that one separately.
So it's meeting minutes for the March 21st. It's on page 40 of our packets. That's one, I asked Dr. Willett. It's a reduction of the 3.13. It says, over last year's 2.99, it wasn't last year's. Budget proposal he, they made, and I was asking what the difference was between the 3.19 and 2.99. And Lisa is a liar.
Okay.
So that was just the only change, just want to make clear, I wasn't asking the difference.
Yeah. So I would entertain a motion to the doubts, 11.1 through 11.3 and 11.5 through eight, as is, and 11.1 as intended.
So.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, that is unanimous.
Ms. Chair, I just want to make also clear that I voted aye to approve that there were some meetings that was not present at, but I did review.
Yes.
And I did review the recordings and that, you know, that there was no issues.
Yeah. Right. Item 12 corresponds to council.
There were nine mail communications that came in since our last council meeting on March 23rd. There was one regarding the town manager search, one regarding fossil-free buildings, three regarding the budget, one regarding road repair, one about a sign on the green, one about a proclamation, and one about the contaminated.
Counselor Murray, Chairperson's report. I have five items to put out there. First is obviously a bunch of presentations on the 18th and reference the third, so encouraging people to get informed and get out to vote on the third. Number two, which Lisa alluded to, thank you to the Rotary Club and the Commission for convenient to dedicate the Linden Tree in Sage Meadow. In addition, the Conservation Commission has their Earth Day Clean Sweep on Saturday, the 23rd. So there's detail on the town webpage, and then news notices, or visiting the website or the social media webpages. Just a quick update for the community, the town manager search. Had an executive session and reviewed all 17 candidates. We pared it down to 12 and went through the next phase. So as we get further along in that process, more information will be provided, and as we get towards the final stage, there'll be eventual community meetings, the inquiries coordinated, so keep a lookout for that. And then wanted to give a quick shout out to, I apologize if I butcher the name, but Lisa Dangare or Dangare, who won the Talon County and statewide poster contests for the fire safety. I believe Rob DeBeek and possibly Chief Public Safety Staff will be at the board event tomorrow to kind of commemorate them and, and celebrate the win. You know, in addition to Lisa getting local cash prizes for their entry, TIS won a matching grant of $500 from the contest. So just congrats to TIS and to Lisa, so. That was a lead for Chair's report. So we're on the item 14, which is communications and petitions from council persons.
This is more a question for Lisa. I saw that there was a vacancy notice for the firefighter, EMT, or public safety officer. Is this a new position they're posting for or something else?
No, it's staff who resigned, so we'll replace them.
Yeah, that was one from, I think, 18, sorry, I apologize. For, I think it was the first of that, January or February, so it was just not going vacancy.
Okay. Thank you, I just didn't, I didn't know.
We, we had an applicant, we made an offer, and they ended up.
Thank you.
Seems to be our history these days.
And I wanted to circle back on the council's plan for the Affordable Housing Trust Fund review. I know at our joint meeting, there were some specific requests that we, as a council, made so that we could, you know, consider this trust fund, putting it together. And I didn't know when that was, when we were planned to continue our work on that stuff.
I think we were hoping for a meeting possibly in late May or early June, is that correctly, so?
We're working on, yes, we're working on trying to come up with a.
Yeah, I think it was based on the discussions, we probably weren't gonna have enough turnaround to get it done before July 1st. So that's why the PZC is looking to do a six-month more, or extension, so that doesn't start till January.
And at this point, we could, it's totally up to all of you, but maybe we push it out a little bit while we're trying to get all this other stuff done, the big stuff such as the sidewalks and the historic district and all that. They're pushing theirs out, and maybe we can address it in July or August. If that would be acceptable.
Yeah, we can definitely take, like, it is a pretty lengthy list of potential items to come up, but, yeah, we definitely want to space it out. In addition to the town manager search process, all the, like, month of April and May.
Maybe we do it in August. Do you think?
I think that we would need to, because if there's gonna be ordinance pass, we're gonna have to go to a hearing, and there's gonna be a lot of issues. So I think that, yeah, I think that if we can get it for earlier, like even the end of June, early July, I think would probably be the most preferable time.
And I know there was a lot of specific material that we asked for in that meeting, you know, the statutes that would outline any restrictions or allowed uses of neighboring town policies, you know, there, there was a lot for us to.
Research.
Research and.
We'd rather get it right the first time, so if it has to go out, if they do extend it to the end of the year into January, then we have time to really collect all the information.
And process it.
Yeah, right.
I meant, I was thinking about having to read all of that, so. Thank you.
So, so maybe July, such, August, yeah.
Okay.
Any other requests from council members?
But I think in June, we probably should be just figuring out the right.
That's on the, yeah. I think it's numbers, yeah, it's number three on our CEB list, so. No, but, yeah, it's always good to get the reminder, if you don't want to, you know, slip.
You'll notice there's a lot of things on that list that eventually are gonna start getting moved up, but try to make sure I document it all just in case, you know. We don't forget.
Thank you.
Are there any other communications or petitions? Seeing none, we'll move to item 15, public visit participation on any subject of the jurisdiction of town council with a three-minute limit. Again, if you're on Zoom, raise your hand or start time, or bed if you want to speak as a resident of the public. The council.
Thank you.
She's only one, because PZC and Lisa's here, Mike, Mike's.
Mike can't speak.
Going once, going twice, I'll move to adjourn at 9:19 PM. So, so moved by Counselor Murray, seconded by Counselor Nunez. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right. Good night, everyone. Thank you.